Are we, um, do we have a call with Joe at Driscoll today?
Eleven fifteen.
At eleven fifteen.
All right, okay. I'm busy with coming from out of town, so I was hoping to get out of here early, but that doesn't sound like it's in the cards.
Well, I think maybe fifteen minute conversation should do it, so we will aim for that.
Yeah, if you get done in time, that would be good. That would be surprising, but okay. And I don't, I know that I see the first names here, but maybe before we start, we can find out
Sure.
what their last names are, so I know who they are.
It's now ten oh two, so I will open the September thirtieth Select Board meeting. And before we ask for public comments, Deana would like the folks that are on Zoom to identify themselves and have a look at the record.
No, there's time for us.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
I just need Betsy's last name.
Betsy?
She's muted. I, I already quit telling her she could unmute. Okay, I got it. She emailed me.
Okay.
Thank you, Betsy. Betsy, you're on.
Oh, hi, Betsy. All right, we have folks in the public who, if you have general public comments, this would be a good time. If you have specific to one of the three discussion items, you can save it for them, but, yes, Rick?
I'll start, yes. As a prelude to each of these items, I think it would be, I think, helpful for everybody, for the Select Board, to give a little background. What's being proposed, what's the impetus for it, and then to open it up, just so that sets the stage.
Setting the stage, okay, thank you.
I don't have anything that can't wait till next week. It isn't, it's not, nothing is urgent.
Okay.
And perhaps it's carried in that other comment, but just to be clear, what is the purpose? You know, what kind of outcome do you want to have? What's the purpose of each of these items?
Okay.
Is Ben out today?
I think he's coming.
As far as I know, he is.
Yeah, which will clarify a lot of questions if he comes. Rusty?
Hi.
Hi.
Haven't been here quite a while. Is it Russ Key for the? I just was reviewing the MS one that was filed and had a couple of questions about what happened. Number one, the biggest thing that jumped out to me was that four hundred and seventy-two acres was added to the current use. I was surprised at that number because I thought most of Lime's current use availability was already used up. But somehow four hundred and seventy-two more acres were added to current use. And I didn't see when those applications were approved or where that land might be. But that, the impact of that appears to be what caused the flat town valuation. We had two point one million dollar increase in, in, you know, the buildings and so forth. But it was offset by a two point six million dollar reduction in the land values. And I assess, I'm going to assume that that's because land was taken out and put into current use. And just as a note, we have an average land, residential land assessment at fifty-six or almost fifty-seven thousand dollars an acre, whereas the current use land is assessed at eighty dollars an acre on average. And, and so that causes any, any additional land that goes into current use causes and wipes out essentially all other infrastructure additions to the town. And by doing that, it's, it, my prediction is that our tax rate's going to go pretty high this year, when coupled with the fact that the school's bond issue really hits the budget this year. It was voted on last year, but, but it didn't really, the cash flow of it didn't take effect until this year. So it'll be interesting to see what the tax rate comes back at. I don't know exactly when we're going to see that, but.
Well, I'm sure you remember from past years, it's usually sometime in October, depending on where we get in the queue.
In the queue, yeah.
DRA, so.
Yeah.
There's actually a factual answer to your question that I don't know, but, but I can venture a guess. At least as to part of the increase in current use, there are a number of tax exempt entities in town that previously were exempt on all of their property and the rules. My understanding is that the rules on, on that change and they're only allowed tax exemption for the property that they're using actively in connection with their charitable mission. And so a number of those entities, in response to that change, since they weren't going to be tax exempt on their, they were previously tax exempt on all the property, now they weren't going to be, so they took the property that they're not using. For one example, we crossroads, they have a big swath of land that is just open forest, and so they switch that to current use. So that may be the, the source of at least some of the increase in current use land. But that shouldn't really have any impact because that was previously exempt.
Exactly. That would, that would have a positive impact if anything, even though it's only two percent.
Utilities went down also, excuse me.
I'm sorry?
Utilities went down also, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm looking at that, yeah.
From last year. So the total, I think the total impact was a, was it like a forty-six?
Kind of a wash.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Actually, utilities, utilities went up a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, so.
I don't believe so.
Well.
Anyhow.
I'll have to look at last year's, but yeah.
That's not an automatic, I mean, just to comment on your, your thought there. It's not automatic that these places that were tax exempt all of a sudden got into current use. They had to make an application to get in.
Yeah, of course they did.
And that was all approved at, at meetings here?
Yeah, we encouraged them to do that. That's what they were encouraged to do.
But did they do it and we actually
Yes.
voted on those?
Well, we don't, as you know, that's a state law. We don't have the authority to turn people down when they're applying for current use.
Unless they don't.
That's not true.
Can I answer a question or put a little info in? I can't say all of the properties, but I can say most of them. Before they were considered exempt, they were already in current use. So you don't have to reapply. You just have to fill, because they're already there for the state.
I see.
They're just not there for us.
It's very refreshing to hear from someone who actually knows what the facts are.
Well, I try. I don't always know, but I try.
That's, that, thank you.
I'm unusually uncomfortable.
And, and Rusty, I have to apologize because I got some information out for you, for your email.
Oh.
And I hadn't gotten around to sending it. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's part of the reason I'm here. I was just like, I want to know, like, where, where in the world is four hundred and seventy-nine acres?
I know if I did respond to you, you'd come, and we haven't seen you for so long.
I know. So my other, my other.
Took a cattle prod.
My other, my other comment and, and sort of, I just want, I had a bugaboo when I was on the board about Dead Ri, or, um, oh, it's not Dead River, it's, um, who's the owner of the, of the flow adjustments?
Hydro.
Yeah.
Great River.
Great River, Great River, not Dead River. Great River Hydro. Apparently, I mean, the board entered into an agreement with Great River Hydro at some point back, I don't know when. I'm just curious how much longer that agreement lasts and whether it can be, it's not going to be renewed at the end of its term, like, maybe, I think it was a five year, I don't know.
It was a five year, yeah.
So we're almost up to that. But, you know, before that agreement was handled, we had a valuation of that, of the flow adjustments at about a million two. And since that agreement, the, the valuation has reduced itself to almost four hundred and eighty or four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So the town has lost over a hundred thousand dollars of taxable revenue. I, I, I just, I have to question whether that's a good deal or not, to have seventeen thousand dollars a year in lieu of taxes, rather than taxes, when our tax rate goes up and our land values are going up. So I'm just curious to know when that's going to be over and what the board's feeling is about renewing it.
Okay, good questions. We haven't discussed that at all. In the past, we talked a lot about the relicensing, but that's a whole different subject.
Yep.
Okay, other members of the public have general comments, not about the three items we'll be discussing shortly. Nope, welcome. There's a sign up sheet someplace if you can be signed in. Okay, thank you. All right then. And the, the folks that are on, I zoom, do either of those folks have any general comments?
We have a couple of new ones since then, so I don't know. Let's see. Raise your hand if you have a comment. I see nothing.
Okay, and there's a couple more people there.
Yes, Kevall and Ellen, and I don't know her last name.
Who's talking?
Hi.
All right, it's ten twelve, and, I'm sorry, Ben, it's not.
I know. Well, I'll sort and try to call them, so we'll see.
Okay.
But you could do your minutes.
Yeah, we could do the minutes. I'm going to do the manifest first. We have a manifest in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents, of which two hundred and fifty thousand is a payment to the school. So just some folks like to track that. What we wish to do?
I'll move it.
Thank you, and I will second it. All those in favor say aye.
If aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved.
Could somebody mention the number again, please?
Okay, sure. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents.
Thirteen cents is very important.
It's very important. I bought that myself this morning. When I looked at that number. Okay, we have minutes to approve from September sixteen and September twenty-third. Thank you, both sets, and I will second them. I did see the edits, I made edits, then from that draft, you, David made edits. So we are on a final draft. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. So the minutes of nine sixteen and nine twenty-three, which was a, both are public meetings, but the nine twenty-three was a previously not scheduled meeting that was very short, like a half an hour, just to take care of a couple of items of business. Okay, now, did we talk along? One more minute and we will open the first public hearing. Okay, well, we're going to start with the bear ordinance. If no one objects, let's.
That's not the public hearing.
That's not the public hearing. No, it's a public discussion.
Right, but your public hearing has to start at ten fifteen. Sorry.
I was just going down the list. Good thing we came along. Ten fifteen, that's too bad, everybody's here for that. I will open a public hearing at ten fourteen on veterans' tax credits. I hope that if anyone is interested in this, they did go online and look up the change that the state has effectuated. And Deana, would you like to give a short synopsis of this? Because it looks like they are trying to be helpful, but it also could be hurtful if it's not done in the right way.
Right. So what the state has decided is that if a veteran has a disability credit, they can no longer have the standard veterans' credit. Right now, the town has a two thousand dollar disability credit and then a five hundred dollar standard all veterans' credit.
Just for being a veteran?
Just for being a veteran or for being a disabled veteran, and you can't have both, so we have to.
So the change is that they've said, you're either disabled or you're just a veteran. The state has said.
Yeah, you just can't draw both, which you've been able to do for years.
Which would mean that if you were a disabled veteran, you would lose five hundred dollars, you would lose the five hundred dollar disability benefit, and so.
Not disability benefit, the five hundred dollar standard veterans' credit.
I'm sorry, I got it wrong. But so the, the proposed change would be to increase the amount of
The disability credit.
Disability credit so that it covers what had previously been covered.
So it'd be twenty-five hundred dollars instead of two thousand.
Just as a point of clarification, the disability credit is for veterans?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So if you're a veteran, we're now proposing you get either five hundred dollars as a veteran or if you have a disability, you get two thousand five hundred. And so if you're in the latter category, you're getting the same amount of money as you were previously.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear, get that clarity out there.
Yes, sir.
I, I was confused with it, but it sounded to me like this is for a hundred percent disability, not just a disability. Is that correct, or did I read it wrong?
Well, disability is disability in some ways.
Well, there are different, there are different levels.
There are different levels.
But the, it, the five, the, the people that it affects in our town are, they're considered part of this. So we're talking about what they would, how it would affect them.
There is a, a place where if you pull up the RSA or you go to the state's website, there is a line that you can click on which tries to explain it further. I've read it several times. It's not crystal clear.
No.
Susan was.
It does make it sound like this is for a one hundred percent disability, not just any level below that.
And the other thing is that this does have to go to town meeting. So between now and then, hopefully, we can get crystal clear clarification. And it's possible that we could consider more than the twenty-five hundred.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, the proposal, I think, here is that we would make it so that this change doesn't adversely impact disabled veterans. But I think we could go another two thousand dollars higher.
I think it's five.
I'm looking at this to sheet.
I know, I know. It's very confusing.
Yeah, they don't ever write anything that's, you know, easy to read. I always want a cheat sheet for them, but they don't do it for me.
I, I would like to propose a move that we take this proposal as we've written it to town meeting. And between now and then, that we get really good clarification and we get a sense of the public if they would like to have that number be bigger.
Before we vote on that, does anybody here who has strong feelings about this or thinks, has a view about what we ought to be doing here?
I have both. I, I want to, yeah, look at clarity on Bob's question. If you're fifty percent service connected disability, do you get a proportion of that in the credit? Or is it just you get the two thousand, in, under today's rules, you get the two thousand with your ten percent or a hundred percent disability?
I don't know. I'm not going to, I don't know the answer to that.
All right, okay, so.
The, the basic change.
Right, okay, so that's.
I understand what you're saying. We, we have not studied that.
Okay.
But the basic change is simply to try and get that five hundred dollars that every veteran gets.
Right.
Put it in with the disability credit so that everybody, nobody loses it.
Sure, exactly. And that's the second part of my question or comment, which is, I totally support that. That's, that's a good idea.
It seems to me to be an issue of basic fairness and just trying to keep people from getting penalized because of a, a change, a change in a diddly squat state.
But also, one clarifying thing is there will be another public hearing on this before it goes to town meeting. So it can be officially voted then.
So, and at that public hearing, we should have an answer to the question about partial disability.
Yes, and then you can make changes to what you already recommended if you choose to.
Excellent.
So we don't need to vote on that? We're just done?
Uh, you should vote on it because you're going to take it to a public hearing like that.
To a second?
Well, I'll move to, or you.
I already moved, but you can second it. Okay. All those in favor of moving forward with this subject to a second public hearing, potentially to town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Judy, aye. Okay, so it will go to a second public hearing. And let's push that out, maybe to November or even December, but we need to really study up on what all those things mean. Maybe we can post something on our.
That or, yeah.
Okay.
It has to take a little amount of time of doing it more, so once I figure all that out, then you can do all three of these together. It'll be fun.
Yes. Okay, well, we can't really, ten forty-five is the next public hearing about the ethics and conflict of interest ordinance. So can we?
Do the fair.
Could we start the fair?
Sure.
Okay. Let's begin with the bear. Opposed draft ordinance, this draft was brought about, Ben Killam actually introduced it. He's concerned, he was reading a number of listserv posts in the early spring with the bears wandering around the common and people's backyards. And he knew that other towns with a lot of tourism, more in the north country, had ordinances. So he suggested maybe we look into that. And the draft that was published was to potentially take care of the nuisance bears we have had. There was some question on the listserv about whether we actually had a problem, and there was one. There had continued to be one. And so what you need, and we really hadn't considered composting, I hadn't at least as part of this bear ordinance. It was mostly about garbage cans, bird feeders, which I'm guilty of, and dumpsters that are attracting the bears. And, and this, this year, it was a mother bear who'd been around town for several years and some pups, all learning to feast off humans' discards. So that's the background, that's why we're here. And the Select Board got a number of emails to the Select Board, most of which seemed to be about composting.
You mean all of them?
Well, not all.
No, not all, but.
I didn't see the ones that weren't here.
So I will open it up to the audience here and then we'll go online for folks to speak. Yes, Rick?
I don't have anything to say right now. Would it be possible to identify the writers and the thrust of their comments? That would help, I mean, I think that would help inform the whole discussion.
Well, listserv writers
Yes.
are on listserv.
Sure, sure. But, I mean, so we've all had a chance to see the listserv.
Right.
And I'm not suggesting you read them now. I would go through the room first. But it would be helpful just to say Fred said yes, Mary said no.
Oh, yeah, well, we can do that. I think it's kind of counterproductive, but since most of it was on the listserv.
Your choice. Well.
We could make the, I mean, those emails are public record, they're public materials, so we could make them available to you. But we, I don't want to try to characterize what people say, and I don't think I, we want to take the time to bring them all out in full.
But let's go through the room. These are people who were able to come and were interested enough to come. And let's start in the back row. Yes, Karen?
I remember coming to say, what is a bear ordinance? And I got the information from Ben. As he reported, having grown up here and now is our international expert, what I remember from his comments were, we didn't used to have a problem and bears weren't in town. And they weren't, you know, mashing down people's gardens or ripping into unprotected trash bins. But with the growth of the downtown and with people not knowing how to handle their trash responsibly or bird feeder, we have provided a food source and animals are going to go where there is a food source. And what I see helpful in an ordinance is a recognition of that and also kind of here are some of the rules, you know, that can help us do that, help us keep our neighborhoods safe. It's not, you know, necessarily meant for out in the wilderness, but I have friends in the wilderness in this town who have had problems with Rhonda, her two cubs and her mate, as we have enjoyed them in our yard. So from a framing point of view, that helped me understand that we didn't used to have a problem, now we do. And there's a whole lot of education that could be helpful. And I hate the notion of penalties and rules that do that because who's going to enforce them? But if there could possibly be some period of time to, and I don't know what our international bear expert would say, would be a reasonable time to discourage bears from coming into town. Have some, have a trial period to help people get used to whatever these new rules are. That's all I would say before enacting fines and penalties.
By the way, just as a procedural point, in order for this to get enacted, it has to go to town meeting, right? So there's going to be some public discussion and people will be made aware of it.
An actual hearing, so you haven't had hearing yet, so you'll have to.
This is just a discussion, but that's very helpful.
But get up, get up, Karen Keane, Ten Market Street, get up front with encouragement as opposed to penalties. There are a lot of people having part of the, the welcome package to town saying, we've got mud season, so don't ride your Ferraris in March, and here's how you can protect your waste from bears.
I, I could be mistaken about this, but it's my understanding from talking to, to, to Ben that I think he thinks that the, the, the primary source of the, at least initial attraction is commercial enterprises and not individual people leaving out bird feeders. That, that there's a couple of businesses that have big dumpsters with lots of calories in them and that what happens is the, the bears are attracted by that. And then, you know, while they're here, while there's a bird feeder or there's somebody's garden and they kind of hit that. I, I think, and when Ben shows up, he can correct me if I'm mischaracterizing his, his, what he said to us. I think his view is that if we eliminated the commercial source of the problem, that the rest of it would probably be devenous or go away altogether.
I recall him saying that, and I think having everybody in town play or come to the party to behave better, we can also take care of problems that are happening outside of the downtown area as well. Thank you for that.
Yeah, so there's two, we, we got a lot of emails saying, don't do this the way you've drafted it because of composting. Just as, by way of background, I drafted this ordinance. And the way I did it was I went online and I looked for every bear ordinance I could find and then I tried to pick the best out of those and amalgamate them. A number of them had provisions on, on baiting as well, and I didn't include that because that wasn't something we had discussed. But I, I did do the, and none of them, none of the ones I saw dealt with composting at all. So the, it's actually a really good point that people make and one that I hadn't thought of in advance. So it seems to me there's sort of two ways to make, or at least I can think of two ways to address the composting concern. One way would be to modify the or, the draft ordinance so that it only applies to commercial enterprises. And then individual homeowners are off the hook and we're not giving people tickets for their bir, bird feeders. I don't know, we'd have to get counsel to weigh in on whether we're allowed to do, to do that. And then we'd have to have some sort of definition of commercial versus residential, I suppose. The other, the other obvious alternative would be to just add a provision to the ordinance that says composting's okay. And I don't know, if, if we do that, then maybe we want to have some limits on what sort of composting is okay, maybe. Maybe people putting out lots of roasted meat isn't a good, and my understanding is that that's not something people generally do when they compost anyway, so maybe you'd want to limit it to, to vegetable matter or plant matter, I, I don't know. But, but that's the other way we could, we could make it so that people aren't getting tickets for composting, at least that I can think of. There may be others, those are the ones that kind of struck me.
So, my biggest issue with these ordinances is, as someone mentioned, the enforcement, I mean, how, how do we enforce this ordinance? I mean, I, I don't, I can't even envision it. I hate to say it, but I'm like, is the neighbor upon neighbor gonna turn each other in, and then somebody comes out? I mean, how's this gonna happen if somebody's bird feeders are out when they shouldn't be, kind of thing, or, or, I don't know. I, I just can't quite envision how we enforce it.
My, my guess is that we would, if there's a problem, you'd have the police go out and talk to people and say, hey, why don't you fix this? And not write a ticket, and then probably you're not in a position of actually enforcing it or imposing fines unless you get somebody who's a real recidivist, who's, or, or who's saying, screw you, I'll put my bird feeder wherever I want, god damn it.
Yeah, right.
You know, that kind of stuff. At least, my sense from talking to our, our police officials is that they're not out there confident to write tickets for people. It would probably be the typical sort of line enforcement, which is very gentle and only in cases where. Probably, at, at least Ben's view, if I understand it again correctly, is that just having the ordinance and having, you know, Chief Tony be able to go out and talk to someone and say, hey, you know, there's an ordinance about this, and if you do this, we could, you know, you could get a ticket, is probably sufficient in ninety-eight percent of the cases to eliminate the problem.
I see.
That would be my guess, but.
Okay.
I, you know.
Couple, couple of thoughts. One is I agree with the idea that probably this is not going to get enforced except against what one might call repeat offenders. You know, if you, if you accidentally leave your garbage can at once, and, and the bears scatter it all around your lawn and you clean it up. And that's a, that's a lesson to you.
Yep.
And hopefully you learn not to do it again. But the other is that you might be able to restrict this by district. That, in the commercial district, it's required to have covered dumpsters or, or however you want to phrase it. But that might be another way of controlling where you're gonna apply this.
That's a good suggestion as well. I know, I know. That it is the commercial district that is the driver of this, but it was also, I think, the, Ben was reading, or early on in the spring, people were concerned they would be on the Lime Common, and there would be bear poo, and/or there would be bears. And, after you see two or three of these sort of frightened concerns, I think the feeling was, well, maybe we need to be more proactive and do something.
Well, from my point of view, if you've got a bear, mother, and cubs, and occasionally the mate out on the common, people are in danger.
Yeah. It's tough to know.
Just on a, on a side note, I have, I'm in a path, I don't know why, but my driveway on Thirty-four Pleasant Street has excrement every two weeks. So it comes up over the yard, somehow comes right through the path, and then decides that the driveway's the place to deposit it. That's how I know the bears are definitely coming right.
They were around.
Right through me, you know, right through here, I don't know.
They could probably go through the cemetery and down.
Is that it? Well, I mean, it's right, I'm right here.
Yeah, you're right here.
Yeah, right across from the town.
Maybe they go up the road.
Yeah.
Maybe coming from my backyard.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, let's set out the radar trap and see what can.
Yeah.
Lots of great pictures.
Or a game camera, but anyway, I, I had a comment, and I want to pick up on what Karen said, that my, my daughter, who's a serious educator, says I'm a behaviorist, and so, what we're talking about here is how can we change? Is there a way to change the behavior of people in town, and maybe even establishments in town too? To get rid of the problem, and I would definitely favor education over an ordinance or penalties or that. And so, maybe, I, I guess I'm hoping as hope, that this discussion engenders an awareness in town that things can change, and come November, we haven't seen any more bears because people have done the right thing.
And they.
Without having.
I was gonna say, or they're hibernating.
Well, by November, they'll be hibernating, but in the meantime.
Maybe by April or May, you could test it.
If we could, if we could break the cycle, which, it's the bear's behavior, all you need is mama to bring the little ones, and then you've trained a whole new generation.
Although I think to, to say something, I think I heard Ben say was, they come a couple times, there's no profit here, right?
Right, yeah.
That they actually are uncomfortable coming into the town, because there's all these people around, this is really scary stuff. But, there's that giant food source there, so they, they make that evaluation, and if they come a couple times, there's no food there, it's like.
We want to know what Rusty has in his driveway.
It's what it's eating.
It's the salt lake.
I'm finding, I, I think it's, they get full at his place.
They stop leaving their roast beef out, right?
Roast beef kill mine, huh?
Okay, do we, we have others in the audience?
No, I agree with the other comments, I think education is the key to this whole thing. I think a lot of, Christina Field Sparks, one Cutting Hill Lane. I think a lot can be avoided through educating the public, I mean, there's other things we can educate people on. I was just trail running and saw a few people running in brown clothes, and I'm like, it's hunting season, wear red. So I think there's a lot of things that we can put in the welcome package. But even those, you know, that have lived here for a while, you know, we, I think we can still re-educate.
Thank you. Joe?
Jack Elliott, Lime Inn and Two East Stepford Road in town. And, first, thanks for asking for input on this ordinance, that was a, a good step.
We're learning.
That, my personal experience, twenty-six years in town, and twelve years with a restaurant and a dumpster, I haven't had any problems on East Stepford Road at all, until this year I saw a bear in my driveway in the evening. Last year, at the inn, we had two to three times with a female with a cubs, and the result was garbage scattered. This year I've had three or four times with a young bear, and my assumption is probably one of those cubs, because it was not a large bear we had on the cameras, where it came in, it comes in from Karen Keane's house. Actually, it comes in, it came in, it comes in along the wetlands that go along the sides between Doug Boak's house and Lime Inn. And then jumps up, we have muddy footprints up into the enclosure for the dumpster. And then, it goes walking right back out past John Griesmer's rental, and right over to the next dumpster and, or somewhere else. I don't know, but it was on camera, and trash was scattered. One thing I'd like to express is that bear populations are up to record levels in all the states. And, so I would counter that it's probably not the increase in limes population that could be causing the issues, that the bear populations are high, and that's a good thing, and we have to learn to live with them, so I'm sure that that's gonna continue on. But, limes population has not increased that much in the time I've lived here. It hasn't increased that much in years. Bear, and then the other thing I would say, bear attacks, black bear attacks are extremely rare. While everyone fears the black bears, they're, they're very, very rare. And, I think that there are, the national number of attacks on Wikipedia can be on one page. So, the fear of the bear, I think the bears are more concerned than people are. And that the bears, if you think that bears aren't around us, they're in Rusty's driveway, they're in my driveway, but they're, and they're black.
Don't leak toilet paper on them.
And they're, you know, I've been friends with Ben for decades, and he had a study of Swardie being collared, and her walking in and out of everyone's backyard, all through Lime Center, and never being, no reports, no nothing, and she was there during the daytime, during the nighttime, so the bears are around. But, there's very few pop, problems with the bears, and just when we see them, we're reacting. So, my reactions to the ordinance as a business owner, the first thing I would say is, it's not defined that if you're gonna require businesses, commercial districts to have bear-proof containers, you should definitely specify what a bear-proof container is, because if you're gonna have lime police come and cite people, even if they're nice and using the hand of the law, they should know that it's not X, Y, Z, or these are qualified bear containers, just like you have qualified night lighting, or night-friendly skylighting. So, to say a bear-proof container is, is required, you should have something that says what that is. Personally, as a business owner, I think that it's an overstep for the town to do an ordinance to businesses that would require the businesses, this is the age-old argument, that it's gonna require the businesses not to pay hundreds of dollars, but thousands of dollars to have bear-proof dumpsters, per this ordinance. Because I had a bear issue for the first time in twelve years. I went to my dumpster company and said, can I get a bear-proof dumpster? We don't have bear-proof dumpsters, the response was. So I had to go get a bid from another company that had, that says they have bear-proof dumpsters. And their quote was thousands of dollars more, and would require me to have a second dumpster for cardboard in my parking lot. And so, the impact, and then, the other point is, somebody, the dumpster company said, well, just put a radio out there. And that's the thing we found the most that keeps the bears away, if you, and I'm thinking, okay, my dumpster enclosure doesn't have that power. Second is that, that will Karen be happy with a radio going off twenty-four hours a day in my dumpster? You know, that's not gonna happen. So, the, the, the ordinance simplifies a problem that's not necessarily a threat to humans, but also is not necessarily a simple problem to solve. And then, my next comment would be, think about the number of dumpsters. It's easy to say Lime Inn, it's easy to say the restaurants in town, but you got Lime Inn, you got the school, you've got Stella's, you've got Country Store, you've got a dumpster behind the old semi-building, you've got a dumpster over here at the, at the, at the home for people. You got, Essies and Gallup has a dumpster. And so, if you're gonna require bear-proof dumpsters in town for commercial businesses, you're talking about a lot of money. So, before we enact that, I think that there should be some careful consideration about it. And then, so, so then, that's, I've lived here for twenty years, grew up in California, but I'm becoming a grumpy old New Englander. And, my other option, before I went and verbalized that, I wanted to give other options, and then I thought, well, okay, this is a great fundraising thing for, find out what kind of dumpsters are bear-proof. And have the kids in school or the town raise money, instead of putting an ordinance with fines. You know, okay, if you think that the Country Store's the problem, we bottom gas debt, gas pumps, why don't we buy them a dumpster there?
We did, actually.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Ben's not here, but I think he's, he, he said, the Killam Bear Center, not the town, actually pays.
Well, that was my other point, is nonprofits can donate to purchase dumpsters.
To get them a bear-proof dumpster, but then, they changed dumpster companies, and the new dumpster company wouldn't service the old dumpster or something, and so, and the new dumpster company is cheaper, but they don't have bear-proof dumpsters, I, I think that's the factual.
So, once again, it's like, okay, the town's gonna require that you have to use certain vendors for a business. And, and the, the other point is, I, I, as a business in town, I. I want to counter the perception that businesses have thousands of dollars extra to pay for dumpsters or trash disposal, so, and I don't mean it, once again, it's the age-old adage of a business complaining about how much it's gonna cost. And, and if it's required, then I'll have to pay it, but I employ, well, the, the inn employs five, and the restaurant employs another ten people. And then you've got Stella's, you've got all those people, and restaurants these days are not doing great. And to require people at this point in age over a problem that's a problem, it's a nagging problem, it's an annoyance, but it may not be worthy of an ordinance, is what I might.
So can I pick your brain, Bridges?
That's fine.
So, the, who are the two dumpster companies?
Well, you had Floyd's, and you had Casella's.
And which one has bear-proof dumpsters?
Casella's.
Casella's, and, and what's the delta on the, on the, like, monthly or annual cost for using the one with the bear-proof and the non-bear?
It's, it's hundreds of dollars per month, and so that's thousands of dollars per year. So it's probably, and, and I don't know what Country Store's been quoted for dumpsters or paying for dumpsters.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
And, you know, perhaps we're all using the cheapest dumpster company because they're the cheapest dumpster company, and we're in business. So, Casella's is a large company, and like I said, they wanted to put two dumpsters in replace of my one dumpster, because they want a separate dumpster in my lot for cardboard, and it was gonna cost me, I think, between two and three hundred dollars more a month.
And, have you had any discussions with the folks at Floyd's about, like, could?
Well, they brought me a new dumpster, and, and it has chains, I've got chains across my doors now on my dumpster. But, the dumpsters these days have plastic lids on them, and the first time we put the chains on, well, we had problems with, the bear got in there, flipped the lids up and ate breakfast, and then, or dinner, I guess it would be, because it was in the morning. And then, the next time we put the chains on, the bear came over and jumped on the top until it squished the dumpster top all the way down, and got in underneath and ate some corn cops and stuff from. So, that, so I'm still working with trying to reinforce the dumpster, and so that comes back to what's bear-proof dumpster, you know? And, and if you gotta go to Yellowstone and find out what they use for those dumpsters and what they're gonna cost, I'm sure they're not. They're not, either not available here, or not usable by the vendors, you know, I don't know.
Sounds like if you replace the lid with a steel lid as opposed to plastic, that that might do it, but. Who do you deal with at Floyd's, because I, I'd love to have a conversation with them.
Well, you can call Sandy or.
Sandra, yeah, okay, I'll talk to her.
And you're talking about a significant impact to potential bottom line if you're, if you're working on X percentage of, of profit, and, and that that's gonna be cut significantly.
I would express that most of the businesses here are businesses of thousands of dollars, not businesses of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the assumption that a thousand, two thousand, five thousand dollars doesn't make an impact is probably not appropriate.
So, just as a, a side point, having nothing to do with the select board really, but, well, kind of. One of the things that we looked at was, well, could we give businesses in particular a tax abatement as a, as a benefit for installing bear-proof dumpsters? And we consulted with town legal counsel, and they said, no, you can't do that, you need a New Hampshire statute in order to be able to do that. And so, on the Killam Bear Center side, one of the things that the Killam Bear Center is doing is talking with folks in legislature and political people who are in the position to do that about the possibility of adding a New Hampshire statute at the state level that would authorize towns to have a tax abatement for, you know, animal-proof dumpsters. So, that would help to off, helps, help, or maybe completely offset the additional costs associated with that. But unfortunately, that's not something we can do just locally, that's something that has to happen at the New Hampshire level. The Killam Bear Center is pursuing that.
Yeah, well, and maybe you just take it down a couple steps, and instead of trying to deal with the state, you deal with the dumpster companies and see, okay, what can you guys? okay, what can you guys work with, what kind of dumpsters?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Sandra.
And we buy those dumpsters. And I, I don't, and I'm not asking for a free dumpster. I'm just saying, yeah, if I can comply with something.
I mean, for whatever it's worth, I am, could not be more sympathetic to that, that argument. I mean, the last thing I think I wanna do as a selectman is uh, is make life more difficult for our local businesses, which I appreciate enormously. So.
I think that the town is better off having three restaurants in town and viable businesses and a, and a viable country store. And to do things that help the businesses or at least don't detract from the businesses is probably a better plan than to put out an ordinance that requires something. And if it's commercial, I mean, I think education is a good role that we treat the, the bird feeders and the garbage cans one way. But if it, if you're zeroing in on dumpsters, then let's try and work together to do it instead of uh, instead of being punitive.
Can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
That I know, excuse me, that on the town website, there's absolutely nothing about information concerning bear possible problems. And what I've done is gone to the state of New Hampshire and they have a huge section with bulletins and handouts. And this one's called Be Wise At Home Checklist. And it has all kinds of do's and don'ts.
Yeah, I'm probably helped write that.
And I don't, I don't know, you know, maybe it's worth getting some of this on our website.
Well, at least have links to it, you know.
Sending out messages, right, and having links to it so that people can read about it and get educated. And you know, some people move to town new and they don't know that we have bears zipping around downtown. But it might help put an add-in to some of this.
Okay. I think.
So there's one online. Judy, there's somebody raising their hand on one.
Okay.
Yes. Um, can I speak?
Sure.
Okay, I'm Ellen Meribach, cause she said, didn't have my last name. Um, I just am listening to this conversation and I saw the thing about the bear ordinance. And I'm just wondering, as a town, how did we get here? How did we get to a point where we skipped everything about the conversation about the bears, about the communications, and we skipped to a legality, um, a legal document? And, you know, the legal document points to me then who is liable, is the property owner then liable, are the businesses liable for breaking this ordinance? And the person who brought this up, you know, Ben, he represents the bears. And I do feel like the select board has been selected to um, represent the citizens of Lime. And I'm asking you to question yourselves about how did we get into this big legality thing with these huge fines? There's people here who probably wouldn't pay the fine without having to forego maybe their own food needs. And I'm saying, I think we should cool it down. And I agree with everybody who's saying education comes first, which we haven't done at all. We haven't had the conversation. And um, and to skip to this to me is just uh, really upsetting, actually. To skip to something where we're actually thinking of even doing this. I think when it's hunting season, we put out there, wear orange. Um, we put out stuff about what to do about everything else in town, about clearing your driveway, don't put snow in the road, do this, do that. We speak to each other. Um, this is going beyond speaking to each other as a community, is what I believe. So, sorry for that, but.
No, that, actually, that's a great final statement because we are a little late for the next public hearing. Thank you very much, Ellen. And good reminder to all of us about being neighborly.
A quick anecdote. We have Brett Ryan isn't a butter. I was, I have, my yard was loaded with trash. He put an electric fence around. I have no trash. Um, it didn't cost gazillions of dollars and he put the fence around his dumpster, which, for which I'm very grateful. And thank you, Ellen. Um, I appreciate your comments.
And I agree with the electric fence. Um, we have, we've had a, one bear got it near our chickens. And we put electric fence, baited it with peanut butter and a couple zaps and they haven't been back. But um, there's solar power electric fences, so you don't have to. And the, you know, the months of the year where there's not a lot of sun, the bears are hibernating. So if that's an option, at least to start with, I mean, that, that might be um, a cost-effective way to, to begin. If the bears are getting in at night mainly, I think it would be difficult to get in and out of the trash.
Okay, thank you. I, I really do have to stop.
Sure, sorry.
Very, very late for a scheduled other public hearing, but I think these are great suggestions. It's good to hear. I'm hoping we can get some of this written up and put it on our website and put the things that Dina found on the website. And yes, start being more proactive, um, rather than reactive. So I really thank everyone for their comments. It's been very thoughtful, very helpful for me at least.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, ten minutes, almost, more than that, but almost fifteen minutes late, we will open the public hearing on everybody's favorite subject. A code of ethics ordinance. And this also will need to go to town meeting to be enacted. We did have um, several instances in the past year of folks either on a committee or a commission or volunteer. Something that didn't seem appropriate or more self-interested than uh, having a higher standard of conduct. So again, we have this code of ethics and that was also able to be accessed, correct, Dina?
Yep.
And, let's see, from the attachments, so um, and Ben, uh, Ben. David, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
No, I think that kinda covers it. I mean, right now, there's an ethical code that applies to select board members only. And uh, as anyone who works in town government knows, there's a lot of, a lot of things that occur outside of the select board. Uh, uh, boards that have authority to do various things and um, it just seemed appropriate that we have a, a, a broader set of clear ethical rules that apply to everyone who's, who's participating in town government.
Good. Excellent. Yes. So, Sue.
It, it almost seems like the same solutions could apply to this situation as the previous discussion. Deal directly with the individuals and just put out a reminder to everyone of what it means to be a public servant. And, I don't, rather than a whole ethics thing, which nobody's gonna read or abide by anyway, but.
I will say, most towns have one of these. I think that's, I don't know if that makes it better or worse, but.
Have we had one in the past?
No.
Just for the select board.
There have been no others. For, wait, well, you've got the committee handbook.
Right.
Yeah, but that doesn't say anything about any of this stuff. So, so for example, if you're on the committee and you uh, go to, let's say you wanna change in the zoning for your house and you go to the, y- y- and you go to the zoning board and, or you're on the zoning board or uh, and you, you offer to trade benefits for, for getting a favorable ruling, right now, there's nothing that prohibits that.
Wow. That's all we've come to?
Well, I, I don't know what we've come to, that's just what, what the, what the rules are. So this, this, this uh, I mean, this is not a terribly complicated set of ethical rules. I, I, again, this is something I drafted and I drafted it by looking at literally dozens of other towns that have similar sets of rules in, in force. There's a New Hampshire statutory framework that sets up what a town has to do in order to enact a set of rules like this. And you have to draft something, it has to go to town meeting, and the rules have to apply prospectively only. You can't penalize somebody for something that they did before the rules were enacted. But uh, you know, this, this set of rules just basically says, look, you have to have the best interest of the town. If you're, if you have a, a personal conflict of interest, you have to recuse, you have to, you have to tell the board that you're serving on or the group that you're serving on that you, that you have a conflict of interest and you have to recuse yourself. And you can't do stuff where you trade benefits for, for uh, something that you're doing on the town. You, on behalf of the town, that that's, you know, you have to. And I think most people would, you know, most people probably do that anyways. Or if they fail, they fail just because it didn't occur to them or it's by inadvertence. But I think, uh, at least it's my view that it's nice to have a clear set of rules that you can point to and that you can show people when they sign up to. Oh, you know, a lot of times people run for these offices, they don't know. And, you know, if you've, if you have a legal training or a medical training, maybe you've had ethics courses and so you've been sensitized to some of these issues. But, but a lot of people, for a lot of people, that's not the case, you know, if, if, if it's not, they can't look at something and go, okay, here are the rules, then they don't know, so. At least that's mine.
Phil.
I've been a part of and in leadership of lots of organizations over my life. There's never been one that didn't have an ethics code. It, it was considered a basic piece of policy that every organization ought to have. I'm in favor of this code. I, I think that David drafted it carefully. Um, I do have a question about it, but in general, um, I think this says simple, sets up sort of simple rules that, that ensure the people are trying to do public business rather than being self-dealing. Um, that's number one. The question about implementation that I'm not exactly sure of. Let, let's say, and this, then I'll use a personal example. I'm on the library board, I'm on the budget committee, okay? Does this prohibit me from sitting on the library's budget as part of the budget committee? Does it prohibit me from talking about how well or poorly I think the library is managed budgetarily before the budget committee? Cause I'm not sure, I, I don't have no pecuniary interest in this. I, I have an interest from the library's point of view. So I'm curious as to.
That's a really good point, Phil. I, I, I think the way personal interest or, or personal conflict is defined, it requires a personal interest and not. And, but we could easily add a sense of say, you know, for avoidance of doubt. Service on another town board where a similar issue arises does not give rise to conflict of interest.
I mean, if we sit on the budget committee with three or four members of the school board, you know, it's, so are they supposed to recuse themselves from all school discussions?
Well, there shouldn't, present, there's only one that's presently on the school board. The others are previous school presidents. But yes, it's um, the goal was just sort of as a general reminder, you have to sign an oath of office at the same time. You could sign, and at least been acquainted with what a conflict of interest is. And a lot of people have their own self-interests and they're volunteering mostly for these other committees and commissions. But they haven't even put together that piece of it where, once you are serving on one of those, yourself comes second.
Yeah.
Unless you, to prove yourself. So, but that's a good, that's a good, um, we'll make sure.
I'll add that, I'll, I'll address that.
Thank you.
I can still, we can still make changes to the graph, right, Dina?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, because it will, as we learned earlier, there'll be a, another public hearing. And then it will go to the town meeting. Does that make any difference to your thoughts?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Rich, do you have a?
I don't have any comments, no. Thank you, Mary. These are good comments.
Okay. Rusty?
Oh, I'm good.
You're good.
I'm good.
Okay. So I will move the, the subject over to a, be amended or added to and then go to a second public hearing. Do you wanna second that?
Yeah, I'll second it, sorry.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Judy, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, do a second public hearing after an amendment. Okay, I think we've done good work here.
Yes, we have.
We do have a little bit more of the nitty-gritty.
Throw my hip out in judo class this weekend.
Probably have ten minutes.
Okay.
Or a little less than ten minutes.
Okay, we're gonna take a short break. Then we will.
Just cause you lost your core?
Yeah, right.
Dina and I can do quite well ourselves.
Get done like that.
So Judy, let me just make a, a qu- comment just on the side. This is not really official, but Orford has just completed a reevaluation in the town. And the town valuation went up seventy-three percent. So, then letters, once the valuation's done, letters go out and they tell everybody what their assessed value is. Well, some of them were up a hundred and fifty percent and so forth. What they didn't do was they didn't send the letter or any comment with those letters regarding the fact that the increase of seventy-three percent is going to mean the tax rate's gonna come down. So that people didn't just get alarmed that, oh my God, you know, my tax assessment's way up here and what's, and, and so there has to be some way to estimate at least a little, give them a, a range of where that tax rate's gonna be as a result of this increase in town value. And, and so that's just some, I don't know if that's gonna happen here, cause I know we're doing a reassessment. And based on the equalization ratio, I assume it's gonna be fairly significant for an increase in town value. And that will reduce the tax rate and so forth. But those two components should be communicated together so that people don't freak out.
I think we usually do that.
We actually have a little snippet that will go out explaining, and it has a couple little samples on it.
Oh, good. Well, is that from Todd?
When a revow will come out.
Was that like a letter that, I think I saw a letter that, cause Todd, Todd does Orford as well.
Yeah, but I, I don't know that it will come from them, but it's something we've used before.
Well, the revow is gonna be a different company.
Yeah, exactly.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so just, just as an alert that, hey, you know, I mean, don't let pe- so they had um, eighty, I think eighty property owners that scheduled
Yep.
uh, you know, reviews before the MS one could be signed. And it took forever to get those meetings all accomplished.
Yes.
So, and, and the simple communication that, you know what, even if your property went up by seventy percent, your tax bill's not gonna change. And, and that would've eliminated a lot of those appointments, I think. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Phil?
A general point. Um, there've been a number of times over the time I've been attending this uh, board that citizen resp- unexpected citizen responses to things have come up. The, the, um, the kerfuffle of significant concerns on the bear ordinance, on the, on the um, the, the guardrail, I've been a number of them. I'm wondering, I know a previous select board had a process of a member of the select board having an open listening session every couple of weeks or, or, or once a month or something. You know, the, the town could pay for a piece of pizza and a glass of water at Skelet's. Some people could sit there with a book and let citizens come in and talk about what their issues are. Or also, you know, say, hey, we're thinking about what to do about the, the, the road problem up at the skiway, the, the end of River Road, the, you know, the bears. What do you folks think? And so that the board wouldn't be functioning in isolation, again, proactive rather than getting slammed after doing the best that they could to make a decision. And by the way, I have a tremendous amount of respect for the amount of work all of you do. I, I am not asking anybody to contribute any more hours or, in the great Yiddish phrase, soris, trouble worries. trouble, worries, difficulties to, to their life, but this might be where we avoid some difficulty.
Thank you. Food for thought, for sure.
Yeah, that's all.
And my experience is that people don't tend to get involved or even become aware of something until they're pissed off about it.
Maybe we can convince some of the pissed off, if we let them know it was coming at them. And maybe it would be useless, but you know, I used to sit with a counselor at large, but in the University of Buffalo's dining hall, and sometimes people actually came up and talked to me.
Mostly I get, uh, accosted when I go to the co-op grocery shop.
Maybe we could avoid some of that.
That would be, well, we did continue, I think it was Sue's board, and we did continue the listening sessions for six months or even a year, I can't remember, but they were very occasional when anyone came, and it was about a two-hour session, I think, and it, you know, the days are busy.
Yeah, I hear you.
But-
And we do have everything on our website, so people can go there, and I know they have to read it, but, or watch the meet, or listen to the meeting.
This requires both reading and reading comprehension.
Well, you know, people have to take responsibility to get themselves informed also.
Yeah, a lot of times people get upset about stuff and say, well, I was, I told, why didn't, when in fact there have been seventeen prior board meetings, and they're just not, you know, I, I don't blame them, but when I'm off the board, I won't be paying attention to those.
I'll be sending you reminders.
I was president of an organization, I didn't have anything to do with the day I wasn't.
Yeah, um, we are a few minutes, we've got two minutes to go before we're gonna have a call. So, what happens is that's non-public with legal, we are going to have to come back for an intent to cut.
You wanna do that?
Is that the only thing, let's do it quick like a bunny right now.
I'll move it.
The Sanders, Ben Sanders, Matt Ford, fifteen, Saunders, you're right.
I, I don't have Ben's expertise, but it worked okay to me.
Okay.
Well, Ben would have already reviewed this and let us know if he didn't think it was open.
Okay, so David, I will second it, all those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, okay, that's approved. Okay, and then, we have an exempt property application, I don't think we can do that in a minute. So-
You can come back.
We'll come back and do that, the exempt property application is for the Center for Northern Woodlands, so everyone knows. Was it over, David?
Thanks.
Thank you. And so, I-
Pretty ink color.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm going to move that we go into non-public session under ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, L for legal.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you all, thank you very much.
Bye.